This has been a long process working on the budget. We'll get into more in just a minute. The first piece of business we need to take care of, Mrs. Foster is not present with us this evening. She is traveling, so she is on the speakerphone. Jesse, if you would state where you are and the reason that you are not in the meeting?
Yes, I am in Carlinville, Illinois, seeing my grandmother who was hospitalized.
Okay. Do we have a motion to allow Mrs. Foster to participate remotely?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we will now then go on with our regular meeting. First, we're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance, so if you all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, and if you will take this time to join us in a moment of silent reflection that you can use to prepare for the meeting, in silent prayer, or to gather your thoughts. Okay, council, we have a number of things to discuss this evening related to the 2025-26 budget. First, we're going to do a little bit of an overview here, and then we're going to talk about tax rates, fees and rates, and the budget itself. A couple of notes we'll go through as we go through some things here this evening. We definitely had discussion between staff members, so many of the issues related to some of the school funding have been ironed out, so I think we're going to be in good shape on that for this year. We are working on many, many different components as we made a number of changes last week and in the week before, looking at the budget, and Mr. Meadows is going to talk about that. So Craig, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It feels like we've been in this room for at least six months, but since I've only been here three, I know that's not possible. So, but we've been working on this for a while, and first and foremost, I want to thank the council and the mayor and city staff. The department directors have spent a ton of time talking about not only where we are, but where the city of Radford is going moving forward. And before I even get into the budget this evening, I want to talk about the fact that a budget is simply a planning tool. It is not, it's not a document that you adopt, and then you put it in place, and you don't look at it again until the spring of the following year. This is a living document that as we move forward into the days and months ahead, anytime that things aren't looking like they're holding true to projections, we need to immediately stop and address that and have conversations with council. One of the things I have shared with council is we're going to do a much better job of providing them with monthly financial reporting so they can more clearly see how some things are going. If there's any trends that are not being addressed as we think with this projection, projected budget will occur, then we're going to address those at that point. And I do want to say in general that I do feel very strongly that this budget gets the ship turned in the right direction, but there's still some course correction yet to be made as well. This is something that with the city's finances that we started talking about back in January and February, this is not something that happened overnight. It's something that has been developing over several, several years, and it's not something that can be fixed 100% in one budget cycle. But I do appreciate all the efforts that have been made to get us where we are this evening. This is what was presented last Monday evening, the general fund, or excuse me, all funds for the fiscal year 26 proposed budget. The total was $77,262,257. At the meeting last Monday evening, the council approved on our first reading some additional fee increases related to taxes. They also discussed additional spending cuts, which I'll talk a little bit more about in just a minute. So that's $77,262,257 after the adjustments from last week of $721,000. That budget, the total budget now is $77,983,257. And all the changes were reflected in the general fund. Some of the changes that we will talk about have effects in the other funds as well. But in order to, because some of the other funds transfer money to the general fund to support operations, it all nets out, if you will, through the general fund. The changes that were made to reflect that additional $721,000 and also reflect some changes in expenditures. The proposed real estate tax was increased from 79 cents to 82 cents, which was the advertised rate. The increase in personal property taxes from the current rate of 254 to 255. The increase in prepared meals taxes from 5.5% to 6.5%. Increase in hotel, excuse me, occupancy taxes from 8 to 8.5%. The council took an action to decrease their salaries by 10% for the upcoming fiscal year. There was an adjustment of about $86,000 to the regional jail expenditures to reflect what the regional jail was budgeting for revenue from the city for fiscal year '26. The school board had graciously offered to allow for $500,000 of their capital reserve funding, which was in reserve to be transferred to the city's reserves, and we were able to take that $500,000 and apply it to the school funding for the upcoming year, which closed that gap from, I think, $609,000 to about $109,000. There is action in this budget to freeze personnel costs related to vacancy positions, sometimes known as lapsed salary savings. As positions become, there's currently, I believe, seven positions that are open, but as positions continue to open in the city organization due to retirement or due to folks leaving, those positions will be frozen. The city will have the option, working with the city, the department head, the city manager and city council, to fill those if needed. But the projected savings from freezing a number of those positions over the next year is expected to be about $1 million. The city did increase the contribution to the employee health insurance. The city's experiencing a dramatic increase in the employee health insurance costs this year, and they, the city council agreed to contribute another $106,000 to that. And with those changes, the increase in projected general fund reserves is now $1 million, almost $1,200,000. This is a slide that shows the revised budget for all the funds for fiscal year '26. Again, the total is $77,983,257. That's the revenues. The expenses across all funds and transfers are $75 million, a little over $75 million. If everything goes as the budget hopes with plans and the estimated revenues and expenses, at the end of fiscal '26, the city should see increases in reserves of nearly $3 million. Most of that is in the general fund, again, due to accounting for those lapsed salary savings. There's also increases in electric and water and sewer. The increase in streets, that is primarily related to funding the city receives from VDOT. That can't be used for water and sewer, for example. The reserves that are increased in streets can only be, can only be used for projects associated with highway maintenance inside the city. So, there's been a lot of work to get to this point. As I said earlier, I'll get to that in a minute. As I said earlier, the revenues in many of the funds are actually down or flat or down from the current year, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that we tried to be much more realistic in the expectations of the revenues. One of the things that we did, and I appreciate Calista's help with this, is we took a hard look at the last several fiscal year's actual revenues and use that as a basis for projecting the upcoming year. That's generally a more conservative way to project revenues, but hopefully it's a little more realistic in terms of what we'll actually achieve. Expenses pretty much across all departments unless they were contractually mandated, or there was some other issue going on. They're pretty much flat across the board as well. The last couple of slides, and then I'll stop to allow any questions or discussion. Again, just a reminder of where Radford will be with this proposed budget. With the proposed budget, the real estate tax for the city will be 82 cents. That's higher than the two counties, but less than the four towns. And when you think about what services the city provides, it basically provides town and county services together as an independent city. So even at that, you're, you're less than any of the four towns in the adjoining area. Real estate tax estimates based on the 82 cents, someone, and I've always picked this middle column, someone who has a $250,000 house will be looking at about a $325 annual increase in the real estate taxes. Someone with a $150,000 house will be looking at about $195,000, excuse me, $195 annual increase. We've talked about the water and sewer rates. Proposed rates are $8 higher than the current rates. So someone with a 4,000 gallon build that's now paying $52.80 for water and wastewater will be paying $60.80 once those rates are enacted, sorry. A solid waste fee is proposed to go from $22 to $25 a month, which is an increase of $3 a month or $36 a year. I tried to put together a slide that encapsulated all those increases, and again, using that middle line of someone in Radford who has a $250,000 home. The total increase with real estate, water, sewer, solid waste is approximately $457 a year, $38 a month, about $8.79 a week. So, yes, they are increases. Again, I would argue that the value of the services that are provided by the city and for the amounts that our citizens are paying, especially when you compare them to neighbors here in the NRV and beyond, I think is still very reasonable for a community this size and what services you provide on a daily basis. So, that's it for the presentation this evening. I hope, hope that helps, and Calista and I'll be glad to try to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Craig. We'll get to statements in just a minute. Does anyone have any questions based on what we've talked about? There is one amendment that we have to make, and we're just going to talk through it when we get down to the tax rates, because we do have to take out the penny that we had planned on the cigarette tax. What we didn't realize is the Commonwealth had capped that at 40 cents where we are. So they limited what we can do, and so that can't go up a penny, so that'll be about $3,000 that we won't realize in new taxes. That'll be a part of that. But that's part of the challenge that we face is that the state, this is a Dillon Rule state, and so the General Assembly can limit what localities can do to raise revenue, to spend money in certain ways to do things as they try to make their communities work, and so that's one of the limitations placed on us. Are there any questions for Craig? Okay, so we have talked through the tax rates, and as we go into this, we have to go ordinance by ordinance. Jesse, are you able to hear us okay?
I am. Maybe whoever goes up to the podium speaks a little louder.
Okay. So for ordinance 1813, which is our 2025 tax rates, do we have a motion that we adopt that ordinance as has been presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? Janet, I know that you wanted to talk about the personal property tax rate. We have checked with our legal on that, so any work that has to be figured out on that, we're going to have to figure that out. But we're going to move forward.
It is publicly known that you are going to be throwing away good money, tax dollars, on software that you're getting rid of to do that. And not only that, I told you all a few weeks ago that it wasn't.
Janet, I appreciate, thank you very much for your thoughts. I know you've shared that with a number of folks today, and we've done our due diligence as a council. Just Robert's Rules of Order, I'm suspending things for just a second while we address this real quickly, that there was a question whether it was legal or not for us to move from $2.44 to $2.55 in the personal property.
It shows that you do not have the knowledge because nothing, I haven't said.
Janet, please, I'm going to ask you to please stay in order as we go through this, because we're not having this discussion right now. I'm just. Janet, you're out of order. I'm going to ask you to please stop. No one is deceiving anyone. Janet, I'm going to ask you to please stop. I'm going to review this once again. The proposed tax rate is moving from $2.44 to $2.55. We have checked with our attorney to ensure that this is legal. We have checked with the Commissioner of Revenue. That has all been taken care of to the best of our ability as a council. So having said that, council, we have a motion and a second. Jenny, would you call the roll?
Ms. Artrip?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Ms. Foster? I don't know if she can hear me.
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all very much, and Janet, we do note your comments on that, and I hope. Janet, I'm going to ask that you stay in order, please. I was just acknowledging that we heard what you said this evening. We've also checked that out. Ordinance 1814, which is our fiscal year 2026 fees and rates, those have been presented once again this evening to review everything. Council, do you have any questions? Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1814 as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Jenny, will you call the roll?
Ms. Artrip?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. And finally, council, we have ordinance 1815 for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. We've given a brief overview of that tonight. Everybody has worked really hard to try to make all of this work and get to a balanced approach for this. So council, do we have a, any further discussion before we consider a motion? Do we have a motion to adopt the budget as presented this evening, ordinance 1815?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jenny, please call the roll.
Mrs. Artrip?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all very much. I know this has been a very difficult process. We're going to have plenty of opportunity for everybody to say a little bit when we get down to council comments here in just a minute. First, I'll turn the floor over to the city manager.
Mayor, I don't have anything else to add. Thank you for all the hard work, and I just want to reemphasize again that this is a process. It's not the end. It is, gets us to the next step in the, in the process so we can get the information to the Commissioner of Revenue and then on to the Treasurer, and thank you for all the hard work that you guys have put in.
Thank you, Craig, for all your hard work, and Calista, thank you all so much, and I'm sure we'll have plenty more thanks from that. Jesse, since you're on the phone, would you like to go ahead with your comments?
You know, it's, I'm just going to keep it really short and sweet. This has been a very, I was going to say taxing year, but that wouldn't be that funny after all, would it? I just want to thank Craig and all of council for working together to come up with something to get us back on the right track, and we are headed there.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Guy, what comments do you have this evening?
I do not have any comments.
Okay. Seth, what do you have for us?
I just want to reiterate that, you know, that we did work together to get this, even up till today. There were changes being made to this budget where some things weren't being seen, and, you know, I, I do think that we were given the task of trying to fix a massive problem, knowing that not enough revenue or reductions could do it all in one go. I, I do think that there was a concerted effort. When you, when you look at some of the slides that have been shown, that we have made a good faith effort. When you're talking a million dollars in employee reductions, that, that's a real cut. That's people that if attrition doesn't happen, we're tasked with a, with the great decision of having to do that. So, you know, we, we have done some hard things. We, unfortunately, it was a pass-through, but some of the insurance-related costs that were absorbed into the city, that, that has a very real effect on our employees, and I think that they would all say that too. So the burden has been, been shared with everyone. The revenue, I can promise you, I, none of us had any joy in increasing those, but we want to be able to fund our schools. We want to be able to take care of our people, and at the end of the day, you know, when you're $9 million in the rears and no reserves to speak of, you, you can't do nothing. You have to start fighting and digging out of here. This isn't the end-all, be-all, but this is the first step, the hardest step, and we're going to have to keep working. We cannot get complacent. We, we, this, this budget will be a work-in-process throughout the whole year and next year, and probably the following year to get us to where we need to be. But I do think that all of council worked hard to take the first and hardest step, and there's very real reductions and very real increases. No, it does not completely fix the problem. It stops the bleeding and takes, I think, on one of the slides, close to $2.9 million that is in reserves that we can apply to, to our deficit and start knocking that down, close to $3 million, maybe two AEP payments or somewhere in that neighborhood. There also could be a disaster that comes through that changes that, but I appreciate everyone's effort. Craig, I know you spent countless hours, nights and days, you and staff and everyone to, and just, just thank you. It's been a very difficult process, but we were all appreciative of your leadership, so thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Kelly, what do you have?
Well, Seth, I think you said it pretty well. I'm not sure what else I could say besides that. I went back and listened to a lot of hours of comments today that were online and looked at emails and text messages and, you know, listened to voicemails, and I don't think that I anticipated when I got elected how difficult this job would be, even in a happy, fun budget season. It's very difficult. And I know that when I got elected, I didn't do it to make friends. I did it to try to better the city as best I could, to make decisions that I thought were going to be, help the situation, and that's what I've tried to do, and I think that's what we've all tried to do. There are a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. I know that there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes on school board. You guys talk and make decisions and, you know, and try to come to a, you know, agreement on some things, and there are some give and takes, absolutely. And I think that we have all worked pretty hard for the most part, and, and, you know, even though we've had differences, we've come together and had a united front for the most part. There's no way to make everybody happy. We've either done too much in some places or not enough in some places. But we, I'm 100% sure that we have tried. We have spent a lot of time on this, and I also know that we are not done with this at all. It is a constant look ahead to see what we can do, how we can change things, make things better, communicate better, have more transparency with everybody, and I don't think that we're going to stop doing that. So I hope that we have not lost faith in the community and the things that we've tried to do, because we are, we are trying very hard to, to right the ship and go forward, so. Craig, I can't thank you enough. I was very sure that when we had our interview with you, that, that you were my favorite pick, and I stand true by that choice. You've done an excellent job. I know that that corner office gets hit a lot with more than the budget, so I appreciate everything that you do. Thank you guys very much for working on everything. And thank you to all the city staff that came and commented and, and shared your voice. We definitely want you guys to keep doing that. So I, I don't have anything else to say. It was difficult, for sure.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm not going to get into too many weeds that we've already covered a little bit here, because everybody did such a beautiful job sharing their, their thoughts. But I will say, you know, this is not what people typically run for office to do. You're inspired to try to help make life better every day for the citizens that live here, to bring people here to the community, to build things up. You don't ever come in wanting to cut a certain department budget, at least most folks don't. You don't want to come in looking at a tax to increase it. Those are things that you have to do to achieve the overall goal of moving us forward as a community. This is a problem, I will dare say, I can't speak for everybody, but I can speak for myself, that we didn't think we had to this degree. And a lot has come to light as we've moved through the process. We've pretty much done every bit of that in front of you through all of these meetings over the last three months, trying to demystify the process as much as possible. I had some people reach out to say, you know, we heard a lot of this last year at budget time, and yeah, you did. We thought we were in a different place 12 months ago. The difference is we've reworked the way we look at our revenues. We've gone back and looked at our expenses again, and what we think we have now is far more reliable than what we had before, even though we thought that was in pretty good shape. We're in a much better place now, and we're going to monitor it differently as well with some new reports that we're developing to try to make sure that we're telling the story to those that have to make the decision in a better way. I'm responsible for every vote that I take sitting in this seat, and I fully accept that. That responsibility is a great honor. It's also a great challenge, because you have to rely on the information that you have available to make those decisions and the things that you can do to try to make a difference. I'm not out in the, with the police in the police cars. I'm not in the schools every day. I'm not behind the scenes with the, the accountants in the city. I have to rely on all the information that we get together as a member of council to say, I think this is where we are, and I think this is where we're going, and this is why I'm going to vote this way or another. But I do appreciate every single person's work on this. I appreciate all of you for coming out and talking with us. We've had tons and tons of conversations and talked about the things that you're afraid of, the things that you're unsure about, the things that you hope for, and for the most part, while there have been some rather, rather difficult conversations with folks, people have been great. I've heard so many people say, thank you so much for the work you're doing. I know they've talked to our other council members to say, I know this is really tough, but we appreciate the hard work and the hours to Craig and Calista and the entire staff. This has been a tough, tough time for everybody as we have scoured every single page, every single line of the 3,400-line budget, trying to figure out where every single dollar can come from to help us be a stronger Radford and to move us forward. I've been accused often of being a cheerleader for our community, but this is a great community, and I'm going to point to one thing that was a perfect example of that on Saturday. You know, we were really trying to be very, very frugal this year, and so we weren't able to have the city-sponsored Easter egg hunt in Bisset Park. And we had. And we had different people and agencies step up, different organizations, Community Life Church, Community Works New River Valley, Keith Welton's from Ameriprise, who stepped up to sponsor that event, to pull it off beautifully, lots of volunteers who made it happen, and I saw a very happy community on Saturday, coming together and enjoying the good things in the city. That's where we're headed, and we're going to have better days ahead. It's never going to be easy. No way is it ever going to be easy, but together, we're going to be able to do it. I want to say thank you as well to our schools and our school board. I know this has been a challenging time as we try to understand more of the minutia of state expectations, state opportunities, what we're able to do. I know I learned a lot more this year than I had known in the past, and I think together we can, we can work on even tightening things up and improving them even more for the good of everybody in our system. But I really do appreciate everybody's work. Thank you to all the members of council. It's been stated multiple times, everybody worked together on this. I think there was more work on this budget than we've had on any budget in the past, and we've all dug into the numbers as deep as we possibly could to make sure there's not a question left out there that we couldn't answer, to make sure that we've dotted every i and crossed every t to the best of our ability. So with that, we are moving on to some new business that we have to tackle for the city. We are in the process of hiring a new city manager, and as such, we need to go into a closed session to move forward in that process, and before long, we'll be able to have more of these things that are a little more public, but we're at the point of the process where we are in closed session. So I'd like to make a motion to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jesse, did you give me an aye?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will go into closed session for a little while. You all are more than welcome to wait. All the budget business has been taken care of. The budget is adopted for this year. We're going to go into closed session to deal with some personnel issues, and then we'll be back after that. Thank you all so much.